Establish a quorum first of the commission.
Yeah, but I just want to do it at the beginning so we don't
I agree.
Have people wait and say, "Wait, I waited all night."
Yeah.
That's fair. So let me take a roll of the commissioners present. Chair Ahie.
Chair.
Vice Chair Bodnar. Vice Chair Bodnar? No answer. Commissioner Bresik.
I'm here.
Commissioner Lee?
Here, present.
Present. Commissioner Merrick?
He was here.
Commissioner?
He was here earlier.
I did see him. I see.
He's still muted.
Still muted. I will mark him as present. And Commissioner Meadows?
Here.
Commissioner Meadows, present. And Commissioner Simak. I don't see a here or see a name, so I'll mark Commissioner Simak is absent. We have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, great. So I guess, do we want to start with public comments not on the agenda? Okay, so we'll start with any public comments on items not on the agenda. Is there anyone that has a comment? I don't believe we have any, but let me just double check. Anyone on the line have a comment not on the agenda? Going once, going twice? Okay. So next up, the consent calendar. Planning Commission minutes from April 16th, 2020. This was a revised version. If anyone has any comments on those minutes or wants to make a motion.
I move that we accept the minutes as presented.
I second the motion, and I thank Guido for making those revisions.
No problem.
Then do I want to do a roll call for all those in favor? Okay.
All those in favor?
Yes.
John, we need a roll call.
Okay.
Yeah.
Chair Ahie?
Yes.
Commissioner Bresik?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yeah.
Commissioner Merrick?
He's still muted.
The iPad is not voting.
I'll come back to Commissioner Merrick. Commissioner Meadows?
Yes.
Commissioner Merrick again? We have a majority voting in favor of adopting the minutes, so.
Okay. All right, so then I guess the first item.
Wait, I have a question.
Yes.
What happened to last meeting's minutes?
We are still in the process of drafting those.
Okay.
You'll have it at your next meeting.
So we'll have double meeting minutes next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So I guess for the first item, if Julie wants to discuss why we're moving it to the next meeting.
Yeah. Okay, well, you have some options tonight with this, but at about 6:15 tonight, Guido and I and it was sent to the Planning Commission. It was a letter by the Californians for home ownership. And it's a letter raising some concerns about the ADU ordinance, briefly looking at them. They seem to be nothing critical. I think some of them are off-base. But, so we have an option. You can, we can go through the ADU ordinance. You can recommend that approval to the council with the direction that we review this letter and make any changes that may be required because of this letter. Or you can continue this item. The attorneys will look at this letter with staff and make what other, what changes we feel are appropriate. So you can go ahead, knowing that we may be making changes to the ordinance before it gets to council. Or you can continue it, and then we'll look at it and bring back something that you all can look at for the final, final, final version. So, but if you want a recommendation from me and from Guido, we talked before the meeting, we recommend that you continue it. But you do have an option to just review it and get it up to council with us making maybe some changes before it gets to council. So it would need a motion, it would need a motion to continue, and it would be to the next meeting. We should have answers by then.
Did we get a copy of this letter?
They did.
It was emailed to you.
At what email, at the Los Altos mail address?
Yeah. They didn't send it till 6:11 tonight.
Okay, and how long is the letter?
It is three pages.
Yeah.
Three pages.
So it's not something that Jolie can read us five points and we could move on?
Yeah, I mean, it's some super-technical stuff. I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The city attorney just has not had a chance to fully review the letter and its contents and the legal arguments it's making yet. There just wasn't time before the meeting. Jolie, I think you're muted.
Oh, okay, there. Is that better?
That's better.
Okay. And what I think, instead of just trying to, you know, review it on the fly and try to explain what this letter says compared to our ordinance, I think with these statutes and the subsections and, you know, the, I think it would be more confusing for us to try to walk through the letter and go through the ordinance. And so that's really why we're saying to continue it, and we'll come back and be able to say, "We've reviewed this letter. The ordinance that is presented is, we believe, legally valid, and we've addressed any concerns that were raised in this letter."
So I didn't see this letter in the inbox, so I don't know if you.
Yeah, me neither. I just checked my email.
Yeah.
Me neither, that's where I am.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't either.
I just looked for it myself, and I see that it went to my junk email, so it didn't come in through the regular email. So I'm not sure how your system is set up, but it could have gotten moved into something that captures junk email or suspicious emails, so.
What is the address, the source address, so we can try and retrieve it?
The gentleman's name is.
Matthew.
Oh, yeah. It was in my junk email.
Was it?
Attorney's name, Matthew Gel Fan, and he's from California for home ownership.
Okay, I'll try and find it.
And why is the, so for us to continue this and to feel, and you to feel that you have to review this carefully, the standing of this organization is such that it merits us not discussing this tonight? And this is really questionable for you, Jolie, I think. So, I mean, they have the standing that would actually.
Yes. And they've ceded HCD, the director of HCD, and there are groups out there, this is one of them, Carla is another group, that are raising legal concerns and possible challenges to these ordinance. And, you know, they do sue sometimes, and so we want to avoid any frivolous kinds of lawsuits. So we want to just make sure we're okay, so.
Okay.
And there, and I have to say, there's a few of these groups out here, out there, that are tracking ADU ordinances, and it's sort of a product industry, and they're looking at everybody's ADU ordinance. And actually, the concerns raised are, I think they're getting into minutia, but we want to make sure we're good when we come back with a final, a final, final.
Okay. So I move that we continue the ADU item to our next Planning Commission meeting.
And that meeting is June the 4th, Thursday, June 4th?
On June 4th.
Yeah, that's what I have, yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call vote?
Sure.
Chair Ahie?
Yes.
Commissioner Bresik?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yeah.
Commissioner Merrick? I'll come back. Commissioner Meadows?
Yes.
Commissioner Merrick? One last chance to unmute. Well, without Commissioner Merrick, the motion passes four to zero.
Okay. All right, so, sorry. So next up, I think we had a presentation regarding the implementation of Senate Bill 743.
Yes. So Michelle Hunt is here from Hexagon, along with Gary Black, and they're going to be giving us a presentation. This presentation has been given to the Complete Streets Commission, as well as the City Council. And the broad overview is just that we have to change how we assess and review traffic when it comes to environmental documents. And that's basically the general overview. I'm going to pass it off to the experts, and they can walk you through kind of where we are, what we've heard from council and the Complete Streets, and hopefully get some feedback from the commission tonight.
Great.
Thank you, Guido. My name is Michelle Hunt. I'm with Hexagon Transportation Consultants, and I'm going to share my screen with you. Can you see my presentation now?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Great. So, on the agenda, in my presentation, I'm just going to give a little background about what VMT is and why we're making this change, how it relates to the city and state's plans and policies, talk about the recommended framework for this new policy, what happens to the city's existing level of service policy, and then we would like to get your input on a few key questions. I'm going to try and go through this briefly. There is a lot to cover, and I'm happy to answer questions at the end. So, first of all, up until now, basically, environmental analysis for transportation impacts has been based primarily on level of service. And that's a measure of, that's generally a measure of delay and congestion, and it's a measure of a performance at a specific location. And we use a letter grade scale, just like back in school, from level service A being the best to level service F being very severely congested. And so any EIR or other NECDAC document has been based on level of service at transportation. You've seen it over and over again. That all is going to change, and we're going to be using a new measure called vehicle miles traveled. This measure is a measure of the vehicle travel across the entire system, and it's usually expressed per person. So no longer will the EIRs be evaluating level of service, looking at specific intersections or even freeway segments. You'll be looking at this holistic measure of vehicle miles traveled. And the reason for this change is a new state law. It's Senate Bill 743 is the impetus for this change. And this became law in September of 2013, and it's taken several years to work through the mechanics of how this will be implemented. But in December of 2018, the Governor's Office of Planning and Research has established new criteria to be used for California Environmental Quality Act, so for Sequoia documents. And the new criteria says that automobile delay shall not be considered a significant impact on the environment. And the new metric for evaluating impacts is daily vehicle miles traveled. And this new change from level service to VMT is to be adopted by all cities statewide by July 1st, 2020. So that's coming up soon. OPR has published an advisory document with recommendations for how to do this technical analysis, and much of the information I'll be presenting later is based on that policy guidance from OPR. Senate Bill 743, the purpose, the rationale for why this came about is to more closely align the environmental analysis of transportation with the state's climate goals. So this new measure of VMT is intended to promote the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions and encourage multimodal transportation networks and also a diversity of land uses that allows for shorter trips and more trips by alternative modes besides single-organic vehicles. This new bill, though, does not preclude local agencies from continuing to apply level of service in policies, codes, or conditions of approval. So I just want to give a quick comparison of why vehicle miles traveled, why we're making this change. And so compare two people. First person, Person A, has a 45-minute commute, and of that 45 minutes, five minutes of that commute might be added time due to delay along that trip. So overall, it's a very small amount of delay, but a pretty long trip. So since the delay is low, the level of service along the intersections and freeway segments along that route would be a good level of service grade. But yet, it's a long trip, and the vehicle miles traveled is high for this individual person. So in terms of accessibility, it's not great. So, but Person B has only a 20-minute commute, but only half of that time is added on due to delay and congestion along their route. So the level of service grade along their route would be poor because of the high degree of delay compared to the total trip time. But the accessibility is still much greater in that it's a much shorter trip in general and less vehicle miles traveled. This slide just shows sort of a similar comparison visually. The picture on the left shows a roadway that would be a level service A, where there's little, or in this case, no vehicles in the picture, but basically, meaning there's no delay. So there's plenty of pavement out there, but it is, doesn't necessarily mean that it's an efficient use of the transportation network, right? Because we have a lot of pavement, and it's not serving many people. And furthermore, it's not necessarily a friendly pedestrian environment, or doesn't even accommodate people trying to bike. So it is primarily focused on the vehicle transportation. And the picture on the right, though, shows a more vibrant downtown environment, where you see much more vehicle traffic, and the vehicles appear to be experiencing a significant amount of delay potentially. But yet, it's a mix of uses that is contributing to shorter trip lengths, and you see that there are people walking, and it is a more bicycle-friendly environment because the vehicles are going slower. So while one is focused on vehicle efficiency in terms of reducing delay, the other is focused on making the whole system more efficient, and just in terms of all types of travel. So the benefits of using VMT as a measure of transportation impact, one of the key reasons for SB 743 was to streamline the Sequoia analysis. So by using VMT, they hope to streamline the analysis of transit-oriented developments, infill projects, multimodal projects, and local-serving retail projects. Also, VMT would be focused on reducing regional congestion by reducing the total travel in the system more effectively. And therefore, since we're focused on vehicle miles traveled, we would not be trying to mitigate impacts by adding, you know, widening roadways, and therefore, we would be reducing any future pavement maintenance deficits. And one of the key factors, purposes of this switch is to improve public health by reducing greenhouse gas emissions and other pollutants. So this switch to VMT aligns, as I mentioned, with the state's climate action goals. So the city has adopted its own climate action plan back in 2013, and it established emissions targets that were based on the region's targets at that time. And that was a 15% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions below the year 2005 baseline by the year 2020. And of that 15% reduction in emissions, approximately an 8% reduction in VMT was suggested as a target, and the remaining reduction in emissions came from other sources. Since that time, the state and our local region have updated their goals for greenhouse gas emissions, and the current target is a 19% reduction below 2005 levels by the year So next, I'm just going to go through several of the key elements that would be comprised in the new VMT policy. And the first is screening criteria. And by screening, what we're talking about is identifying certain projects that can be presumed to have a less-than-significant impact on VMT and therefore not have to go through a detailed analysis of VMT. So the first screening criteria is based on location. And specifically, that sites that are located in an area where the VMT is already known to be less than or equal to the Sequoia VMT threshold that the city adopts would be considered to have less-than-significant impact on VMT. And later on in my presentation, I have some heat maps that will show you locations that, based on the VTA's travel demand forecast model, already have low VMT, that depending upon what your threshold is, that it could be considered to be below the threshold and therefore would get rid of any need for further analysis. Secondly, besides location, projects that are considered small infill projects also can be assumed to cause a less-than-significant transportation impacts. And our recommendation for how to define a small infill project is based on the OPR's guidance in their technical advisory. And they recommend considering projects that generate fewer than 110 daily trips to be a small infill project, and those projects would be screened out, which means they wouldn't require any further VMT analysis. So that 110 daily trip threshold would equate to a residential project of 10 single-family homes, or 20 multifamily dwelling units, or an office development with 10,000 square feet, industrial uses with up to 20,000 square feet, or just for another example, a nursing home with 40 beds. All of those would generate fewer than 110 daily trips, and based on this recommended criteria, wouldn't be required to do any further analysis of VMT. Secondly, or thirdly, actually, the screening criteria would allow local-serving retail projects to be screened out. And again, the definition of what is considered local-serving retail is up for the city's discretion, but OPR's recommendation is that retail projects up to 50,000 square feet be considered local-serving and screened out and not require any further VMT analysis. So I have just a short table, just to show you a couple of examples of existing retail developments in Los Altos, just for comparison. So the Rancho Shopping Center and the Whole Foods store are both over 50,000 square feet. So those would be considered regional retail, and they would not be screened out. They would be required to do a full VMT analysis. But smaller projects like Walgreens and typically any drugstore, and most supermarkets, like the Lucky Supermarket, are under 50,000 square feet, and those would be considered local-serving retail. Similarly, local-serving public facilities also could be assumed to have a less-than-significant impact because they produce low VMT and replace trips to existing facilities without increasing trips from outside the area. So some examples of local-serving public facilities that could be screened out are a new branch library, a senior center, a fire station, or even a public elementary Now, for projects that aren't screened out, I'm going to talk about how do we analyze the VMT, if you are required to do a full VMT analysis. So the VMT metric for a residential project would be the home-based trip VMT per capita. So that is per resident, and again, this is a daily measure, not just the peak hour, but the total vehicle miles traveled per day, per person, per resident. For employment uses, it is a home-based work-trip vehicle miles traveled per employee. So again, these are efficiency measures per person, not total. And we would calculate the VMT one of two ways. First of all, for most projects, the vast majority of projects, we would use a tool that VTA is working on creating. They have already shared a beta test release that was available for us to take a look at and give feedback for a couple of weeks ago. And right now, they're finishing up, you know, getting rid of any final bugs and adding a few features to it. But this tool should be available very shortly. It's an online tool, and for most projects, we'll be able to use that tool. And I'll discuss a little bit more about it in the next slide. Secondly, for a few projects that are very large, or that have an unusual land use, or projects that, or whatever reason, will end up having a significant, causing a significant shift in travel patterns, we would need to use the VTA's travel forecast model. Because unlike, you know, going out to be able to do a trip count, it's not easy to directly measure vehicle miles traveled by actually going out there and doing any count. So the VTA VMT evaluation tool that I mentioned would be calculating VMT for a proposed project based on the project's description, so the land uses and the density that are proposed, the project's location, which factors in its proximity to transit, as well as the walkability of the neighborhood, and the mix of other uses that are nearby, and then other attributes. So for example, if the project is proposing to do any, create or construct any multimodal network improvements, how much, factors in how much parking the project is providing, or whether the parking is unbundled, for example, and then any TDM measures to, that the project is implementing to reduce vehicle trips, such as transit subsidy or bicycle parking, those are all factored into an estimate of the vehicle miles traveled. So once we have an estimate of how much VMT a project is generating, then we have to have a significance threshold to compare it against to determine whether it's a significant impact. So this is, shows you the average VMT for the city and for the county, as well as the nine-county region. And these were all calculated, again, using the VTA's forecast model. And it's based on the year 2015, which is the most recent base year that's available, and based on their latest land use projections. So for Los Altos, the row highlighted in blue here, as you see, the residential VMT per capita is 12.22 miles per day per resident. And that is below the average both for Santa Clara County and for the region. And then for employment uses, the VMT for Los Altos is higher than that of the county and the region. So for the city, the average is 19.07 miles per job per day, and that is about 15% higher than the county-wide average. So just to recap, for the residential trips, your VMT already tends to be lower, less than for most of the other locations in the county on average, but for employment uses, your length of travel per job is higher. So our significance criteria are based on OPR's recommendation, which OPR recommends a 15% reduction below existing levels. And what is the existing level that you compare to is up to the city to determine. You get to make the decision. And in fact, you aren't obligated to use the 15%. And in fact, you aren't obligated to use the 15%. This is a recommendation from OPR, but the city has the discretion to adopt its own significance criteria. But the recommendation is a 15% reduction below existing levels, and our recommendation is to use the city's average as the existing level. So the recommendation is, the threshold would be 15% below the existing citywide average. So for residential, since the average is 12.22, VMT per capita, the threshold would be 10.39. And for office and retail trips, the existing average is 19.07. So the threshold would be 15% below that, which is 16.21. And I'll just point out, for retail uses, we are recommending that those be analyzed in a similar way as office and evaluated using a similar threshold. And, but it would apply only to the employee trips because retail customer trips are, generally, they tend to be short anyways. And secondly, there aren't, it's much more difficult to influence the choices of customers coming into retail businesses in terms of their travel mode. They have much more influence over their employee trips. So this is showing a heat map that shows the VMT for various locations in the city of Los Altos, and this is showing residential VMT. So the areas that are shown in green are locations that the VTA model shows that the existing VMT per resident is already at least 15% below the citywide average. So these are locations that if you adopt this recommended screening criteria, these new residential developments in these areas would be screened out, and they wouldn't be required to do any further VMT analysis because according to this map, they're already below the threshold. Areas that are in yellow are locations where the existing VMT is below the city average, but it is not as low as the 15% threshold reduction. So they would be required to implement some sort of measure to reduce their VMT in order to be less than significant. And then the areas in orange and red are above the citywide average in terms of their existing VMT. Locations in orange are locations where the model shows that it is theoretically possible to reduce the VMT, to mitigate an impact, and to achieve the goal of being 15% below the average. Locations in red are locations where the VMT is high enough that it is not realistically possible to reduce the VMT below the threshold level. And so any new development in those locations would be identified as having a significant impact regardless of how many TDM measures or multimodal improvements they created, they would have a significant impact. And then it would be up to the city to determine if there are other overriding considerations to offset that impact. This is a similar map, but this is for employment uses. So again, it's compared to the existing citywide average and assuming that the threshold used to define an impact is 15% below the existing citywide average. So the first thing you probably notice is there's no green on this map. So that means that all of the locations are, even though some are below average, the locations in yellow are below average, none of them are 15% or more below the average. So there wouldn't be any locations that would be screened out for commercial developments, office or other commercial developments, based on their location. They would all be required to do some sort of trip reduction measure to reduce their VMT. But the locations in yellow would have a little bit easier time because they wouldn't have to reduce their VMT as much. Again, the orange are locations that are above the average, but locations that could be mitigated. And then the locations in pink are locations where the VMT is significantly above the average, and it is not possible to achieve that threshold of 15% below the significant, 15% below the existing citywide average. So, so far, we've talked primarily about office, residential, and retail, but obviously there's other land uses. So I just wanted to talk just quickly about, you know, how do we evaluate other land uses? So for most other land uses, basically, we can define them as equivalent to an office or retail development, and use the same screening and analysis methodology and thresholds as we would use for office or retail. So those uses that we consider similar to office are private school. Again, private schools generating trips from a larger area than a public elementary school. The same for high schools. Also, congregant care or assisted living facilities, medical or dental offices, research and development, or any industrial manufacturing or warehouse use. Those would be evaluated using the same screening and analysis methodology as for offices. So we would look at the trip generation. If it generated fewer than 110 daily trips, that use would be screened out, assumed to have less than significant impact. If not, it would have to do a VMT analysis and show how it would result in a VMT per employee that's less than the threshold of 15% below the citywide average. For the following uses, we would treat them like a retail project. So childcare, religious institutions, business hotels, and athletic and fitness clubs, we would treat the same way as we would treat a retail project. So first of all, we would look and see, is it local serving? And use the same trip threshold as whatever the threshold you define for what is considered local-serving retail. So if you adopt OPR's recommendation for 50,000 square foot threshold for local-serving retail, we would say, okay, does this business hotel generate as many or more trips than a 50,000 square foot retail space? And if it generates fewer trips, then it would be considered local-serving. If it generates more, then you would have to do a VMT analysis, just like a regional retail, and you would be required to show how you can reduce your VMT to below the threshold, again, you know, 15% below the average, and this would be based on your employee trips. For mixed-use projects, we would use pretty much the same format. We would look at each land use component separately, as we've already described for each of the individual uses. But the analysis would take into account reductions in vehicle miles traveled due to internal trips that are made between the uses, right? So if you have an office use that has ground floor retail, right, there's some synergy between those uses. People who work in the building will go down to the coffee shop, get their coffee, and so instead of getting in the car, they just walk down there. So it reduces the number of vehicle trips by having a mixed-use project. So the VMT estimates will account for that reduction. But aside from that, we would use the same significance criteria and look at each use So once you've done the analysis, say you determine, okay, even, you know, this is a mixed-use project, but our VMT is still above the threshold, how do we mitigate it? The most common way to mitigate an impact on vehicle miles traveled is just any trip reduction measure. You'll need to reduce your single occupant vehicle trips. So aside from redefining your project or moving your project to a low VMT area, assuming you have the parcel that you have, generally, you know, your only recourse is to reduce the vehicle trips through travel demand management measures. The only other option is basically to implement multimodal transportation network improvements. So it might be a new trail connection, or to fill a gap in an existing sidewalk network. And then the VMT analysis would need to show that that improvement would reduce the VMT by an amount equal to your VMT reduction goal. So now that we've said that the CEQA documents will not look at level of service anymore, they'll be based on vehicle miles traveled, the city can determine, do you want to keep your level of service policy? So as I mentioned, the city can retain the existing level of service policy in the general plan, and you can continue to require improvements to local transportation facilities to address level of service deficiencies. And I know one thing that has been a concern frequently is, you know, how do all these small projects affect the cumulative condition? You know, all of them adding up? And the analysis of level of service is really the only way to address that. Because vehicle miles traveled, since it's a measure of efficiency per person, these aren't going to add up, right? If each individual project meets its VMT reduction goal, then cumulatively, they all do. There's no further analysis. They don't add up. But level of service looks at the effect of added trips. So the more trips you add by each individual project, you know, it has an increasing effect on the delay. So we recommend that the city continue to require transportation analysis based on level of service, even though it won't be part of the CEQA document, but to inform your decision-making and to be used to identify any improvements that should be built or required of developers as condition of approval. So here are the sort of key questions that the city will basically need to provide input on, or come to decisions on when developing this new VMT policy. First of all, what is the screening criteria for defining a small infill project? The OPR's recommendation is 110 daily trips. So does the city of Los Altos want to go with that recommendation? Secondly, is what will be the threshold for defining any local-serving retail use? Do you feel comfortable with going with OPR's recommendation of using 50,000 square foot as a definition for local-serving retail? And thirdly, the city needs to define what the impact thresholds are going to be for VMT. So projects that aren't screened out, what is the goal, the target below which they have to meet in order to be considered less than significant? So our recommendation is a 15% reduction below the current citywide average, both for residential and for employees. And then lastly is, do you want to continue to evaluate level of service even though it's not required or won't be included anymore in CEQA documents? Do you want to maintain the level of service policy in your general plan and still require projects to do the same analysis as they have been doing based on level of service? Or do you want to make any changes to that as far as which projects have to do analysis, or what the level of service goal is, or even are you planning to track the level of service? So that's sort of the end of my presentation, and I'm happy to hear any comments or try and answer any questions you have.
Great. Thank you so much, Michelle. Does anyone have any questions? Any of the commissioners?
I have one question.
Sure.
Yeah, Michelle, thank you. So I'm trying to understand, so these vehicle miles traveled, obviously, you can measure a number of trips, but how in the world do you make projections for the length of those
So the projections for the trip lengths are based on the model. So those heat maps factor in what the model shows as far as where a residential trip for each location, how long the trips are. And it depends, of course, on a number of factors, but it is modeled because it's not something, like I said, that we can easily go out and measure. But the travel demand models are based on a lot of data that reflect the trip making.
So, I mean, because some people, let's just take employment. Some people commute to work five miles, and other people commute 50. So you have models that give you the proportion of people who do that? Because I mean, it seems to me there'd be a lot of slop in this measurement.
Well, it is an estimate, and obviously, it's an average. So it's not saying that every single person at this location travels only this many miles, right? It's an estimate of the average for all the people who live in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions? I had a couple. I was just wondering, because we've seen some projects that have schools that are occupying an existing church or an existing facility, and the traffic concerns is always kind of brought up in terms of how accurate the studies are. I noticed that the school was considered an office and then a religious space. I just wasn't sure if you guys have considered one use being put into another use and how that would work in terms of the classification?
Well, we, I can't say that I have with VMT yet. But really, we're looking at what the use is, what the use is as opposed to what the building that it's in. So I guess, are you talking about a school that's added to a church that includes both?
Yeah, so I remember in one instance, it was a, it was a school that was going to be put inside of a church building, and then there was concerns about the traffic and the daily trips. So in that case, is it that we're analyzing for what a school VMT is, and then also a religious space VMT, and then combining those, or is it kind of a new number?
So if the religious space was already there, then that would be existing. So we would just be evaluating the new use of the school.
I see.
If it were a combined project, though, somebody is going to build a church that will also include an educational facility as well, a church and a school, then we would evaluate that like a mixed use. We would look at each of those uses individually.
Okay, got it. And then in terms of, because on our El Camino, currently, we, there's a way that you can build entirely residential. So if they, if a developer were to implement a retail into their building, is there some type of number that you could say how much it would reduce the VMT? Let's say they're over, but they want to implement additional retail into their project. Is there, is, because I think you had mentioned that it could actually reduce the VMT if they were to implement retail into a building plan?
Right, yes. So a mixed-use development that would include retail along with other uses would generally reduce the vehicle trips per person, on a per-person level, right?
I see.
So, yes, that would be one way to reduce the VMT per person. Not necessarily reduce the total VMT, right, because there's going to be added retail trips that aren't just generated by the residents. But if you look at the VMT per resident, their trips would be reduced.
I see, yeah, okay. Just was curious about that. Those are all my questions. Does anyone else have any questions? Okay. So if not, I think that you had, you had asked about some key questions. Would anyone want to start off maybe giving some input into these kind of four questions? Sally?
Okay, maybe I misunderstood. I thought this went to council already, or at least that's what the report said. Are we?
So, yeah, so we went to council just to get some broad direction, which we've received. But as part of our outreach, we met with Complete Streets Commission, and now we're meeting with the, so we just wanted to get some, so this is part of the outreach to get the feedback from policymakers like you, so.
Okay. But you're getting, so you're getting our feedback in isolation, so I didn't, I haven't followed what either council said or Complete Streets. So I'm just gonna give you.
That's perfect, that's perfect.
That's perfect, unbiased.
No, no, we're honestly, we're here to just, I mean, because each committee kind of represents a different kind of, whatever you call it, interest group, faction.
Right.
You guys are the land use body, advisory body, so you bring that perspective. You've looked at previous CEQA documents.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, then I'll go. Well, then I'll go for it. So number one, I would agree. I think that projects below 110 daily trips can be screened out. I think we've seen in our analysis on other projects that that's really a more minimal level. So yes to number one. I, the table you showed had one retailer that was at a local serving level, though it was close to the threshold. So I think Whole Foods and.
The Lucky supermarket.
And Lucky supermarket, where, yeah, you're going to go to that table, right? Or they, and then there was one that was just kind of below that threshold. There we go, yeah, Lucky is just below. So, and the question is, is 50,000? So Whole Foods, I mean, so Whole Foods and Lucky are pretty, pretty close to each other. And so, but you have to draw these boundaries somewhere. I, I don't have any reason to argue that 50,000 isn't the right answer. So again, yeah, so I guess that's, that's fine, though. I guess you can make an argument that it could be lower than 50,000. But I don't, I don't have data on which to, to base that. So, because looking at that, you could say Whole Foods and Lucky's are really much more like each other. And Rancho Shopping Center as a whole is definitely bigger. But you could argue that the dividing line should be Rancho up above and then the other two lower, whether they're, you know, so. I guess I'm ambivalent on that one, so I won't take up more time. Can we go back to what's the third question then?
The impact thresholds.
Yeah, should the impact threshold be 15% below the current average? Or should it be some other number? I, I mean, you're proposing that, you know more about it. I think that's probably reasonable if that's consistent with the targets that we've set anyway, so I would guess so. I don't feel that knowledgeable. I mean, your presentation was very good. I have no reason, though, to, I don't think I bring, again, any data to argue with this one. And then four is a tough one. So I think it is useful for local, our local decisions. I mean, if, if we did something that then clogged up a major intersection or two, I think that's a big issue. You know, regardless of whether our standard measurement is now going to be VMT. So I think that probably we still have to look at the level of service. That would be my input on that.
Okay, thank you, Sally. Duho, did you want to go next?
Sure, no, I have very similar views to Commissioner Meadows. I think, yeah, I think 110 daily trips were number one. I think that's, that's a, that's a fine threshold. Don't have any reasons to doubt that. Retail, one, number two, just judging by the type of retail that we have in Los Altos, I think perhaps that square footage number could go lower. I think there's less sort of larger scale retail in Los Altos and also being contemplated for Los Altos. So potentially, that number could drop a bit. Again, don't have any, you know, specific number in mind. But again, there's only three sort of larger retail retailers that qualify for that 50 and over, at least, based on the chart. So potentially, that could be lower. Impact threshold, yeah, 15%. Again, I don't have any, you know, sort of other thoughts in mind on that, on that particular issue. And LOS policy maintained, yes. I think that potentially could be significant for, especially for downtown areas. So I would, I would maintain that.
Okay, thank you. Phoebe, did you want to go next? Maybe, is Phoebe on the line?
Maybe she's frozen.
No, I, I just got back on, I'm sorry.
No, no, no worries. Did you have any?
I was frozen quite a bit. I could hear everybody, but I couldn't get off the mute.
Oh, okay. Did you have any comments on this?
I agree with what both Duho and Sally said. I guess my only question was a subtlety that Sally brought up, which has to do with the nature of the business. Rancho is a multiple of lots of little businesses with a smaller supermarket as opposed to a mega store, which is, say, Whole Foods or Safeway. And I'm, this is a nuance that I'm not sure is captured by this approach. But I frankly don't see a way to do that. It's a little out of my wheelhouse and I, Michelle might have some thoughts on that. But I, I can't figure out which is the one that would generate more vehicle miles traveled, if the square footage is the correct one. But with that said, other than that, I don't think we should maintain level of service policy. Except I appreciate what Sally said, which is, what happens if we wind up with vehicle miles traveled and we have a bunch of F intersections and people are getting whammed? So I don't have a definitive answer, except to say that I think both would be very confusing. But I see limitations to this. Perhaps there's some way of building in a trip lever where if level of service deteriorates to such an extent that VMT would be abandoned. I don't know.
Okay. David, did you have any comments on this?
No, I agree with everyone. I mean, I actually had thought I agreed with maintaining the LOS policy, but I, I think Phoebe also raised this and made points as well. So I, I'm now less sure than I was. But I mean, I, I don't, I don't, I don't know. I probably have to think it over now after hearing Phoebe.
Sure. As far, yeah, I think that as far as 110 daily trips, I think that should definitely be screened out. I do think that for a city like Los Altos, what kind of what Duho said, I think that lowering the 50,000 might be wise, just because there's so many that might be right below that. And then the 15%, it sounds right. I wasn't sure if maybe that was a type of maybe margin of error. And so that's why we're kind of going below the 15%. But I don't really have another number to suggest. And then, yeah, the LOS, I think that, I think what it boils down to is just the big projects that we're going to probably end up seeing a lot of and how, especially in our downtown, because that's such a kind of high concentration area. So it might be something where we have to implement it in certain kind of red areas or orange areas. But, but I don't know if it should be maintained all across the board. But, but yeah, definitely, I think that there's, there's a certain type of project where this is really going to be very important for us to make sure. Because, you know, this is the thing that everyone kind of likes to question when there's a big project. So I think that making sure that the first project that kind of goes through this and seeing if the numbers really check out, I think is going to be important. So it's kind of hard to say now, but everything kind of looks good for the most part. So yeah, that would be my only comments on that.
Okay.
Is there anything else, Michelle, that you would want from us?
No, we're, we're happy to have your time tonight and for your input.
Sure. All right. Well, thank you so much for the presentation.
Yeah, so the next steps are going to be, we received a number of questions from this body, the Complete Streets and the City Council. And as part of our contract, Michelle is going to be preparing a white paper to further kind of explain the pros and cons of different thresholds. And then that paper will be given to the Planning Commission, Complete Streets and the City Council. Then we'll hopefully come back for formal adoption. So you'll definitely have another bite at the apple for this policy.
I think also, Guido, and maybe this is just me, but I think that looking at this in terms of a project like, like 5150, which was the biggest project. I think that if we were to see that, because I remember looking at that report, that EIR, and if we were to see the VMT and we were to compare, I think it might be more helpful so that we can actually see, you know, because that's, that's obviously going to be one of the biggest projects that we have.
Excellent point, excellent point. And as a matter of fact, the City Council did ask for that as well, that when we come back, they wanted to kind of see, basically the same question you had is how does this jive with where we think development's going to go and along El Camino downtown? Yeah, so absolutely, we will definitely bring that back, so.
Okay. Okay, sounds good. So I guess the, the next thing is 2020 state housing law update from the city attorney's office.
Yes. I have her presentation.
Do you, okay. Do you want to bring that up and I can do?
Yeah. Let me, where did I put, did I put it on the desktop? One second. I gotta find it. Where did I put it? One second, John.
All right.
Let me find it.
It's, it's attached to John's, yeah, that report. You can download it.
I have it as well, if you want me to.
Yeah, go ahead, John, go ahead.
All right.
Oh, I can just start, it's just a very general.
Let me, let me go, let me just share the screen.
Okay.
See if this works. Does everybody see that now?
Now, yes.
Okay, good. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. John Biggs with the Community Development Department. We have with us this evening our city attorney, who is going to provide you with an update to the recently enacted California state housing laws. As you've probably heard through a variety of sources, these laws are rather extensive and far reaching. And they have a lot of implications for cities like the city of Los Altos, both in terms of projects that the city is considering now and will consider in the future. And impacts for how we will need to address housing as we move into updates to our housing element over the general plan. So with that, I'll hand it over to Ms. Houston and she can go through her presentation, which, by the way, she did share with the City Council. But as the commission has asked in the past, you wanted an update on housing laws. So we thought this would be a good opportunity to provide you the same update that was provided to the City Council. So Jolene, off to you.
Okay, hi. All right, so this is, and I want to just let everyone know that this is a, is a big, a general overview because you can go to the next slide. Guido or?
John.
Oh, someone, I don't have a clicker, so I.
Let me, um. How's that?
There we go. So I'm just, so as a way of background, whoops. Back, can you go back? Yeah, there.
There we go.
Okay, great. So, you know, this is a very high level. I gave it to council as a high level overview, letting them know that we'd be going into more detail when certain things happen, like when the ADU ordinance came back or when we, like tonight, we're having a discussion about SB 330 checklist. So last, in 2019, as the slide says, over 100 bills introduced, over 20 signed, 20 with impact on cities. As Guido and John and I have been discussing with you, you know, just all the different ADU statutes. So, you know, there were a lot of bills, a lot of overlapping bills, a lot of bills that use similar but not the same definitions. And so we all struggle with trying to, to balance out and try to figure out these laws. And, and, you know, ADU is just one of them. So I can just let you know that the most substantial changes was the new SB 330 and the overall changes to the ADU laws. And I'll go into some of the details with the ADUs, but I think you are much more, you have much more detailed knowledge of the ADU since you've been through the ADU ordinance several times. There were changes to the surplus property statutes that I'll go into. And I'll tell you that, you know, council, planning commissioners, they're, why do we care about surplus property statutes? Well, I'll go into more detail, but HCD is now involved with surplus property. So there's, the whole overall goal is more housing and more housing. And so they're amending more and more of these statutes for local agencies to set aside or provide housing. So that's the overall theme. There's also increased density and concessions for 100% affordable projects and TOD projects, which I'll get into more of the details. So I know tonight, we're talking about the SB 330 checklist. You'll get some more information on that. And, you know, we are, you know, staff and I, we talk every week about the checklist, the ADU laws, the Housing Accountability Act changes, where, you know, density bonus. We really are trying to stay on top of these new laws, the existing laws, and, and better, and have better processes for these applications when they come in. So, okay, the next one, so anyways, as I said, this is a general overview. The takeaway, if I would say, if you're going to take anything away from tonight's presentation, is the state is mandating the increase of supply of housing. And as they do that, it reduces the city's discretion for housing projects. So, you know, even in the COVID shelter in place, the state still allowed housing, affordable housing to be deemed an essential governmental service. So even in the middle of COVID, the, you know, affordable housing was still going to be built, even though it, it even shut down for the first month or six weeks. Anyway, then there are some of these provisions that are supposed to sunset in 2025. I doubt that they will. They may be amended again next year, but I don't think that these laws are going to go away. And so, as I said, we're getting new sections in the government code and we're amending the other ones. And so Housing Accountability Act, density bonus, have been getting new sections. And anyway, so, okay, we're on the next slide. So the SB 330, the Housing Crisis Act, changing the city's requirements or making the city's requirements more stringent. We've been under Housing Accountability Act for a while that requires objective standards for denials of projects. But SB 330 is adding even more requirements and more transparency in putting the checklist and making a checklist available for applicants, putting things on the website and making sure when a developer applicant comes in, they know what, what they're going to be held to, what standards, what regulations, what fees. So the key to an SB 330 project is that there is this preliminary application. And when you submit for that, it freezes fees and standards and regulations. And then there is this other requirement that there can only be five public hearings. Study sessions and appeals count towards these five public hearings. So that's an interesting, very interesting issue in a city like Los Altos that has multiple hearings on pri- So that's an interesting, um, very interesting issue in a city like Los Altos that has multiple hearings on projects. Um, but a pre-application, uh, hearing should not count towards the five. Um, but I think there will be some limitations on that. There are some exceptions to the five public hearings. Um, legislative actions such as a general plan, a rezoning, um, uh, they wouldn't be, they wouldn't count as a public hearing. But again, under the, um, Housing Accountability Act and SB 330, and, um, there are, uh, requirements that if your, if your general plan provides for housing and you need, and your zoning doesn't allow for housing or that density, you get to go under the general plan and not require a rezoning. So you can say, oh, well, I get out of it because it's a legislative act. But then they say, well, you don't need a rezoning, so you're back to your five hearings. So, um, and then one of the big keys is it, the limits on, um, the limits on request for new information and also shortened deadlines. Um, uh, approvals need to be made within 90 days of the certification of an EIR versus 120 days, 60 days for certain affordable housing, not 90. Um, so again, the theme is objective standards, reduced hearings, um, limitations on time to get projects approved. And this is just all fast-tracking, making housing happen and, um, and making it happen fast. So the next slide. Um, so the other thing that SB 330 did, it, it validates housing caps. And, um, uh, Los Altos doesn't have one, but other cities like Gilroy, Morgan Hill, they had, um, uh, what is it called? It's called the residential, um, the RDO, Residential Development Ordinance, that had numeric limits on, um, how many housing units could be built within five years and within 10 years. And they were for growth control, but it was really for infrastructure. Um, because when you have large housing projects with 500 units or 1,000 units, and they're going to be phased over 10 or 15 years, they do have to be phased because of water, sewer, streets, and, and that capacity. So these, these, these development controls or housing caps were a way for the cities, local agencies, to sort of phase housing projects, um, and not get, um, you know, housing in without streets or, you know, housing in without water and sewer. So then, um, the moratoria, um, and, you know, we've had, um, some land use moratoria ordinances. Um, we had one with Loyola Corners when we were going to go back and study the specific plan, see if it needed to be changed. Um, and then we've had some other ones, but, um, no longer can you have the standard land use moratorium that could be put into place, you know, 45 days and up to, you know, and then you'd have to come back and, and re, um, re-adopt it up to, um, two years. And that would be to study the general plan or the zoning. And it gave cities time to study, to see, you know, and not, and not approve projects while they were studying the density or the general plan and to try to get the general plan and zoning updated or studied before, um, projects came through. Well, you can no longer do that. Um, you can only have these urgency, uh, uh, ordinances, moratorium for truly health and safety. But you're going to go study the sewer treatment plant because you're at capacity, or you're going to go study the water capacity for the city because you're running out of water. Um, so, um, they, the state found that, you know, these land use moratoria were just, um, a way of, uh, delaying or stopping housing. And so they, they took that tool out of the local agency's toolbox. And, um, so just another way of the state saying, we don't want you delaying the processing of, uh, housing and affordable housing. Um, and there can be no longer any downzoning of projects. And so that means you cannot re-designate land where housing is allowed by changing the general plan or zoning that reduces density. You know, and density is what the state wants. That's what HCD wants. They want density. That means more houses. And, um, and residential density, um, it's just not how many units per acre. It's looked at as reduction in height, density, increase open space requirements or lot size requirements. And so going back and trying to change your zoning or your, your land use designations, you can't change it, um, after 2018. So they even went, the legislature, they even went further ahead. So, um, people knowing that this bill was coming out and they started doing some density, you know, change, trying to change the reden, density and trying to put density caps or height caps. They, they said, no, you're, you're stuck with what you had in 2018. So, um, I know I'm sounding, you know, like the state's out to get us or something, but it's just, the state is really saying, uh, we've had enough of local agencies delaying or postponing housing. And housing is a statewide concern. It's a crisis. And so they're putting in these, these statutes that makes it harder and harder for local agencies to, um, deny or, um, slow down housing. Um, then there's also some protections for displacement of lower income residents. Um, there's very complicated formulas with that. Um, but that is more when, um, like you'll see this in a, in a type agency where someone buys, a developer buys an older apartment complex, a demo, and wants to rebuild to market or, um, some sort of, um, condo townhouse project. And so now if you're displacing those residents, you're, there's going to be some sort of relocation. And I'm, I, I know those statutes are there. I, and I don't want to even try to start explaining them because they're very detailed, how you determine who's lower income and how you even get that evidence. And then the other complicating, uh, uh, overlay on that is it's just a matter of, um, it's, uh, older apartment units are essentially de facto lower income because they're lower rents. They can't get the higher rents. And so not only are you displacing housing for these people, but it also targets lower income residents just by the very nature of these older units being cheaper rent. So, um, there's a whole bunch of provisions for that. I don't see that being an issue in Los Altos. Um, I don't see that we have any, um, you know, large apartment complexes that are going to be demoed and rebuilt into, um, you know, high-end, um, market condos or even, even, uh, new, um, multifamily. The one thing, uh, SEQA has not gone away under SB 330. So the project still, still has to comply with SEQA. Okay. Um, next slide. Um, oh, and I, I can say that there, um, you know, there are ways to, reduction in housing density can be allowed under SB 330, but it has to be made up somewhere else. So there is what they're, they consider is no net loss. But that's very complicated because that means it's going to have, that, that no net loss is going to have to be seen in your, in your general plan housing element. And also if the property for the no net loss is going to have to be zoned. So, um, you, you can't just get rid of, um, uh, some higher density or lower density if you haven't made it up elsewhere. And HCD and the, and the housing elements will need to, um, keep track of all of that. Um, so the, the key to SB 330, and Guido's going to be talking about it, is, um, it's, we now have a, we will have a pre-application completeness, um, application. And we have to have the requirements listed. They have to be on the checklist. And the checklist is the pre-application checklist. It's not the city's multifamily checklist, which is a different checklist. It's the pre-app checklist. And if you check all your boxes on your checklist, you will be deemed complete. And that's going to lock in the ordinance's policy standards and fees. And it essentially is like the vested right. You, you, you're going to be deemed complete under, on, under those rules. And after you've been deemed complete, no additional items can be, uh, required. Um, there are some required, you can have some, uh, you can ask for more information for clarification. Um, and so, uh, we've been working on a checklist and HCD just came out with their draft one. Um, Guido's going to talk about that. But the checklist must be based on the state law. And, um, one thing I can tell you is these, under Permit Streamlining Act, have always had to have the, a checklist or housing projects. And, um, and they had to be made available to applicants. Um, well, what this has done, and that was under the 65940 government section of the Permit Streamlining Act. You have a checklist. This is what we can require. And then now we've got 65941.1, which makes up the required items on a preliminary application checklist in, in its sections one through 13. And, and that is our universe for a pre-application checklist. Um, so the one thing I, I, I'll say this and I, and it, the reason why this checklist and the Permit Streamlining Act and the deemed completeness and not asking for additional items, um, is there, there are agencies where, um, there's a constant 30-day completeness, incomplete, complete, incomplete. And so every 28 or 29 days, the staff would say, you, you, you need A and B. And then the, the developer applicant comes with A and B. And then they have another 30 days to say, oh, you're incomplete because now you need C and D. So then another, so they, these 30 days kept just rolling and rolling. And, and quite honestly, there have been agencies where your application deemed complete could be, uh, over a year. Yeah, just years. And so they just said, this is enough is enough. This is your preliminary application. You're complete and you can't, um, ask for any more information. And then part of the, the transparency of the SB 330 is when you determine completeness, you're also, um, need to provide notice of appeal, um, when you, when there's a resubmital. So, next slide. I think that's, yeah. So, um, part of, uh, the new laws are, um, reporting requirements and transparency. And this is the, the slide that, um, everybody's saying, well, why do we really, why do we need to know about surplus land? Well, uh, now, uh, the city's required to report HCD, um, a report of our surplus land. We're required to do an inventory. Um, an inventory was, uh, you, you could, but it wasn't mandated. But now you need to do, um, an inventory. Um, and it's changed how, um, how you dispose of surplus property. In the old statutes, and I think some of you are familiar, there were, um, if you were going to dispose of lease, dispose of sale, lease, transfer surplus or just city, local agency land, there was a, there were provisions that you needed to, um, provide notice, actually send out notice to schools, park, open space, and affordable housing, um, developers. Well, that, um, that has remained in the new Surplus Lands Act. Um, but now it's called a Notice of Availability. It, it goes essentially to the same agencies, um, but now HCD. So HCD is now keeping track of local agency's surplus land. And that is, um, just to help provide for housing and, um, especially low-income housing. Uh, one of the other transparency requirements is local agency websites are supposed to include current fee schedules, affordability requirements, zoning ordinance, development standards, all of these things, um, which, you know, we, we already do, but there were agencies that you couldn't find this information. And it was making, and it was slowing down and making it difficult for applicants. Um, so now it's, it's a requirement. Okay, next slide. So this, um, there's some new streamlined affordable multifamily housing bills. And it expands the previous statutes, um, for ministerial approvals of certain multifamily projects for certain Bay Area, there's a special Bay Area provision. Santa Clara County is one of those. Uh, and it's, and if, um, you provide 10% low-income housing, you can, um, you can take advantage of this or 20% moderate income. Um, but it does require, um, uh, that the project be reviewed on objective standards. And now there is a built-in reasonable person standard to find consistency with objective design and planning standards. And so, um, this objective, you know, and now the statutes, objective means no personal or subjective judgment made by the public official. And it has to be verified by a benchmark or criteria available to the applicant prior to the applicant's mental. So you can't come up with some, uh, criteria to use to deny a project that was not available to the applicant, um, before they submitted. Um, so, um, and this all goes to kind of this theme that any design review for, um, for multifamily or housing projects, it has to be reviewed and it shall, um, be completed, and this is some language from one of the statutes, in a way that doesn't chill, inhibit, or preclude, um, ministerial approval. So when you've got these streamlined projects, you, any sort of design review you have can't, um, make it ineffective or, um, make it too difficult for that streamlined project. So, next slide. So then we've got another bill that has increased density for 100% of house, affordable housing. And, um, if you're greater than a half mile from a major transit stop, 80% density bonus and four concessions. And if you're less than a half mile, you get unlimited density, three additional stories and four concessions. And I, at the planning, at the council meeting, I said that I wasn't sure how this applies to, um, Los Altos. And there was some discussion about is El Camino real and is it, um, and are there major transit stops there? And I understand that they, uh, people have looked into that. And it doesn't qualify, um, with a major transit stop. And there's, there's a definition. It's defined, major transit stop is defined in the Public Resource Code. And then it refers to another code. And then, it refers to another code. But my notes here from the council meeting said, "It has to be a fixed route, a bus service with no longer than 15 minutes between stops," or something. So, I'm just letting you know that, you know, this might not apply here in Los Altos. But again, you look at what they're encouraging, and they're encouraging housing near transit. And, you know, if you're less than a half-mile from a major transit stop, and you get unlimited density and an additional three stories, I mean, they're really trying to encourage housing near transit. And I think, you know, you've seen some of these projects. There's a lot of development going on in, I think it's Fremont or Mel Peters, I'm not sure. It's right off of 6680. There's some major development projects going there, and that's near the new BART nation, I believe. So, okay, next slide? So, this one is the tenant protections. And it essentially is rent control for multifamily. And the rent increase is capped at 5% plus CPI, but it's for properties over 15 years or older. So, they're, they're trying to preserve that older housing stock, and this is just another way of protecting tenants that are in older housing. And for, if there's just cause, you need just cause for eviction. And if there is no just cause for eviction, then there will be relocation or rental abatement. And so, they really are trying to keep people in their housing and not get displaced for redevelopment of the project. This one, Sunsets in 2030. I'm not sure, I haven't followed it after it came out, but I was following it before it came out. And actually, it, I was surprised, it didn't get a lot of opposition from the renter associations, at least from what I could find. This one is just more protections, prohibits Section 8, Section 8 voucher discrimination. So, there, that was, some landlords didn't want to accept the vouchers. Okay, next slide? So, this, you're all, you know, there are all these bills on the accessory dwelling units. We've gone through the ordinance now, so this is all probably going to be, you know, you know all this now. But all single-family residential properties are entitled to a standard ADU, a JADU. You can no longer restrict on the number of bedrooms. And there's, you know, maximum size limits, and the setbacks, six feet, are now four feet for side and rear setbacks. So, part of this ADU drama that we're going through, and I say drama just kind of because it's like every year, there, we have new ADUs laws. So, prior to 2016, cities could regulate ADUs based on local preference. But after 2016 to 2019, most of the, the state removed most of the local control. And that was just to promote this type of housing, because it is, it's a way of having more housing and actually kind of more affordable housing. So, you know, over the last three, three or four years, local agencies were, you know, changing their ADU ordinances every year. And I think by the time we get our ADU ordinance adopted, there's going to be probably since state cleanup, and we'll be back, you know, looking at this all over again. Okay, so, next slide? You used to be able to require owner occupancy requirements, but you can't. There's reduced and eliminated parking requirements, like if you convert your garage. ADUs are now allowed on multi. Guido, I think you told me today when we were talking that there may be a bill out there that's going to allow residential on commercial properties, or?
Yeah. It's, I was reading the bill during one of the presentations. SB 1385. This bill would unlock existing land zone for commercial office and retail for potential residential development by making housing ineligible use on those sites. But it's, and it's in a very preliminary stage. It has to get out of committee, and so, it's not, yeah, but the AP.
I didn't know if it meant you had to allow ADUs, or it just has to allow housing. Yeah, so, because you and I were just talking about that.
Yeah.
This afternoon, about stuff. So, and then, we're supposed to promote and incentivize ADUs in our housing element. And we've already talked about the impact fees. And one of the ways we are going to promote and incentivize ADUs is, you know, we've looked into not charging permit fees or reducing those permit fees, you know, across the board. And so, we have looked into that. And I think that is a, and we'll talk about that when our ordinance comes back. And then, the next slide was sort of the outreach on the ADUs. So, the final draft is supposed to be to council in June. I think we still, we still might make that, as I said a month ago when I did this at council. Is, the checklist is currently being drafted, and HCD has its checklist out. And we have the consultant onboard for our objective standards when we redo the zoning. And so, we really are on track with this, with our next step. So, next slide, and then that's just questions. So, a very general overview. The one thing I can say about all these housing laws, and especially ADU, is every time someone looks at your ordinance, or you look at the ordinance, there's always more questions. How is it implemented? And, you know, Guido has been in contact with HCD with our current ordinance. They've given feedback. And, you know, and then, we get a letter tonight, someone kind of picking at, you know, and their, their minor tweaks are picking at it. But, you know, and then, you can have one planner talk to HCD about their ADU ordinance, and a planner from another jurisdiction, and they can get conflicting information. So, there's just been, and there's been, the interpretations have changed. And like the JADU, can you expand the footprint to allow it? That used to be, no, it has to be within the footprint. But now, HCD seems to be loosening up on that. So, it's all subject to interpretation. So, anyway, that's it. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer, well, questions. But the one thing I can tell you, and this is what I've told council, and I think I may have mentioned it to you, but I've mentioned it to council and staff, you know, with the limitation of the city's, you know, planning commission really, and the council's review of housing development projects, no longer are you going to be given deference to try to make changes in projects at the planning commission level or at the council level. You may be able to do some, you know, design review-type changes. Would you be willing to push this back or lower that? But you're not going to be able to deny projects on that kind of design review. And where the projects, what is now going to be very, very important is the application and the determination of completeness on projects. And that's, that's going to be within that first 30 days with that first application. And so, the days of deference to the local agency that adopted its general plan and adopted its zoning, and local agencies having deference by the courts to interpret that, that's all gone. That's just, it's, I used to argue that in court all the time. And the courts wouldn't interfere with the local agency's interpretation of its general plan and zoning. And that was consistent case law for, you know, the last 20, 30 years. And, you know, I used to love the cases off the top of my head, but that doesn't help anymore. All about objective criteria, how complete your application is. Did you catch everything in that, in that first application? And so, it's a whole new, different playing field right now.
Thank you so much, Jolie. I think, Phoebe, you had a question?
I did, Jolie. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. You made a passing reference at one of the reviews we did for the ADU ordinance about doing some pushback on health and safety issues. Is that still a recourse that you see? And I'm specifically thinking of on our street side yard setback. It has been, since time immemorial, a much bigger one than an interior for health and safety for drivers, because people plant outside their fences. And we actually have a fence ordinance that requires that the fence must be five feet back from the property line, when now, they're saying there could be an ADU at four feet from the property line. Do we have any recourse that you see?
No, and I think Guido can answer that, because remember, what are you, one, 12-foot setback on the corners, a minimum or something? And HCD pushed that down.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, and then, they said that we could try to get some changes based on health and safety. And I'll let you, Guido.
Okay. We don't have to pull that question. We can do that at next, we can do that at the meeting.
Yeah, they, they took it out, and, yeah, to Phoebe's point, my whole career in planning, every corner lot, it's had a bigger setback. So, I stuck that in the ordinance, just assuming we'd be able to make that argument. And the answer back from state HCD was, "No, take it out, four-foot setback." So, yeah.
Do we need to amend our fence ordinance at the same time that we're doing the ADU ordinance?
Um.
Because how can you have your fence at five feet from the property line if your building is at four feet?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll have to figure that. Yeah. Maybe let's try to get to the ADU stuff. Yeah. But like, but like Jolie said, I mean, we're already into May. Usually, the governor signs the budget by, was it June 30th? And then, I can't remember what the date is, but every year, by, is it September 30th, Jolie, or October 15th, the governor has to sign all the bills? And so, so, we're literally going to have like a three-month break, and we're going to be doing this all over again. So, it's, yeah.
And then, and if it's like any of the bills, which, you know, planners and the city attorneys, we, they pass something, you know, mid-October, and you need, you need to have a conforming ordinance by January of the new year. And it's just, we don't, we can't, can't work that way. And it's, it's hard, and so, everybody's trying to play catch-up afterwards. But, yeah, so, we will see what, what comes out. And it would be nice, and I think I'm being wishful thinking here, it would be nice just to let these ADU laws and some of the new, like SB 330, some of them to remain, so we can see how we work with them and see how they do work, and before they start changing them again, because it's, you know, it's, it's, it is very, very difficult, especially with the related bills, related statutes, density bonus law, Housing Accountability Act, and the Permit Streamlining Act. And it would be nice if they all had the same definition of what a housing project is, you know, two-thirds, you know, if it's mixed-use, two-thirds residential. Some of them say two-thirds of the total square footage. Some of them just say two-thirds of the project, you know? And the terms aren't consistent. They are getting a little bit better, but it's just, it's just hard for the, all of us to actually try to have real bright-line rules. And right now, without bright-line rules and bright-line guidance, I mean, agencies can get sued and get, and have judgments against them. And so, it's, it's just, it's a different playing field. That's all I can say.
Yes, Sally, you had a question?
Yeah, so, there's a ton of, as you were just saying, ton of these bills and laws. Some of them presumably, whether SB 330 or SB 35, you file in, under that law and that environment. But some of these other ones, don't they potentially layer on top? I mean, you're not just, some of them, you don't just get one environment. You have to, like, looking at AB 1485, which talks about ministerial streamlined stuff, I mean, doesn't that layer on to some of the others? So, I mean, you might be under a number of different laws.
Yes, like SB 35, you will want to, you will want to apply as an SB 35 project to get that ministerial approval.
So, that's its own definition, then?
Yeah, that's its own little world. And then, but the SB 330, the application for a housing project, and if you submit, is a preliminary application, and Guido will chime in on this, I think, too. You need to, they submit with the preliminary application, and then, they have the standard application. And I believe the way it's being interpreted is if you submit, and you, you, I don't think you have to ask for a preliminary application. I think it is now going to just be assumed. Guido, isn't that what we?
Yeah, I think that, well, we actually had a conference call about that, that.
And that's what we determined, even if they don't mark it, a prelim application, we should consider it a pre, a pre-application, and go through that checklist and get the completeness determination made there without trying to guess. And then, and then, you have the requirement for density bonus and the waivers and the concessions, which is, you're right, another layer. And then, if you're going to deny density bonus, you have to make those findings. And if you're going to deny the project under Housing Accountability Act, and it's a housing project, and meeting the certain definitions of how much residential it is, if it's mixed-use, then you're going to have to deny it under those Housing Accountability Act, I call them super findings, which are based on health and safety. So, yeah, there are these other layers. And now, we, under these layers for how you, it's hard to deny density bonus or deny, or reduce the density in a project without making specific findings. It's harder to deny a housing project under Housing Accountability Act. But now, we've got this, the preliminary application has now been changed. And so, that's just from the very get-go, when you apply, we've got a lot more requirements there. And if we, and that sort of makes or breaks the project there. And then, when it goes through, you know, and you're limited to five hearings. And when, and then, how you can deny it or reduce the density is through density bonus law and also Housing Accountability Act. So, we now have a different, I guess, it's not, you know, you've got these overlays of these statutes, but we have a new, like, application entry process. When you first come in the door, we have all these new requirements. And so, but, you know, Sally, you're right. There's, there's a lot of layers of these laws right now. And so, anyway, it's, but we're working through it. I mean, you know, staff and I, we're having calls. We're trying to figure out really how. really how, how to make these checklists, how to make it work, how do we, um, you know, make sure applicants are informed of, you know, the new changes and stuff like that. It should actually really streamline the process and make sure that everybody is, you know, familiar with, you know, our requirements. And we already had, you, you already were, had a application submitter form, but now you're going to have a, a, a different one as well. And so, um, and that's what Guido's going to talk about.
Great. Does anyone else have any questions? I guess my only question, and maybe this is for Guido, is, maybe we don't have to talk about it tonight, but is there a game plan for the five meetings? Um, the five restricted, I mean, because I'm, I'm assuming council will want to have a meeting in their back pocket, um, but I just, I wasn't sure how that's going to affect.
Yeah, and then that's what Jolie and I need to work out because, uh, and, you know, part of this is an education of the planning commission itself and, and also the city council so that, um, you know, if, um, I'm not sure if you can see up on my screen, so, I didn't realize, Jolie actually went through the whole legislation for SB 330. Uh, so thank you, Jolie. No, I appreciate that and I, I.
Okay, you owe me, you owe me lunch or something.
That's fine. And so I, uh, so to answer your question, so part of this is to educate the commission and council. This is a very, I found this, I'm on a bunch of planning director listservs and meetings, and this kind of just really summarizes SB 330. So to your point, uh, when staff puts in a staff report or a presentation, this project is an SB 330 eligible application. Part of tonight is to educate the commission as to why that carries so much credence and why we need to get through as much of that if somebody does try to claim that or, as Jolie said, even if they don't, if they filed the pre-app, which I have prepared, um, that, that's the planning commission and city council's cue that we, we can't have endless meeting, 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 meeting to talk about these type of projects, that we really need to hammer out as much as we can. Um, and really SB 30 is broken up into two parts. There's the pre-app phase, that's the first part of this slide, and there's the second part of the slide, uh, the formal application. The formal application is when you can only have the five meetings. And the pre-app, uh, as Jolie's identified, and I, I was spent, I spent quite a bit of time preparing one for Los Altos and then about halfway through me preparing it, the state created one for us. So I have that up on the website now. Basically, if you meet all of these statutory requirements of what we can ask for, then all of the fees, the rules, the regulations are basically frozen in time. And then there's only two little valves. If, uh, if the planning department deems the pre-app is incomplete, you have a certain period of time to resubmit that. If you do not resubmit that in a specific period of time, then all of the luxuries and vested rights of the pre-app go away. And, uh, then if there was a new ordinance adopted or a new fee that was adopted, then you could then impose that. And then they did layer, using Sally's term, layering, um, if you file for the pre-app under SB 330 and then you don't actually submit the formal app within 180 days, you also lose those vested kind of frozen in time rights. So, you're probably, like I said, as a planning commissioner, because as a planner, I deal with this stuff all day, every day, I guess you, you might be asking, why are we going over this? Why is this so important? And once again, it's number one, to educate the commission. And number two, as stated, if we, as staff, say this is an SB 330 application, then that is your cue to know that, uh, we really have to be focused on our public hearings to ask really good detailed questions so that to the chair's point, uh, we do not put the, the, the council in this really awkward position where maybe they only have one meeting to decide an item because we, we really don't want to put the, the, the final body in that, in that position. So anyways, Jolie's gone through a lot of the law and it's, I know it's already late, so I just wanted to kind of, that, that's more from an operational planner perspective, less from the legal perspective. So that, that's basically my presentation.
I'm sorry, Guido.
No, 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 you're, you're fine. I was just, just, thank you for, thank you for doing it.
Um, yeah, no, that's, that's great. Uh, that's great information for all of us. Does anyone have any comments or any questions for Guido or for Jolie? Yes, Sally?
Yeah, sorry, it's always, it's me, but, um, so is it fair to say, looking at this, so you talked about what happens if the developer doesn't do something within a certain time? Those are really the only two places or however many, I think you talked about two, that it could fall out on their account. But if we don't hold up our end of the bargain anywhere along the way, then the result of that is what? They get exactly what they asked for because we dropped the ball or what?
Yes, yes. So if we don't, so, um, we as a city, so we, every, when a, when a project is filed with the planning department, after 30 days, we need to tell a customer what, what is really wrong or deficient with the project. And for these SB 330 projects, as well as in general multifamily, if we don't do our job and we don't tell customers that it's incomplete, then it's automatically deemed complete by law and then they're vested in terms of anything that 30, uh, uh, Jolie can chime in, but at the 31st day, whatever was on the books at that time, that's what we are allowed to enforce.
Yeah, and, and, and you have to understand deemed complete doesn't mean deemed approved, but then there can be, um, ways that it can get deemed approved. But deemed complete just means you can't ask for more information. You're.
It starts one kind of clock.
Yeah, you know, everything is in that mixing, I'm a cooking, I cook kind of person. Everything is in that mixing bowl at that time and you're not going to be able to go add something else or, you know, it's, it's all there. It's all in that box, it's, it's all there, you can't ask for more. And that's a different way of the planning process when you'd have a hearing and you'd say, oh, go, I want you to go look at this, or we want more information on that, or we think you need to redesign this or that. That's really going to be limited, at least how I see it. I mean, Guido, I think you.
Yeah.
So, Guido, to me, that's much more important from our perspective than what happens if they fail. There's a failure points, but, you know, who cares? We have so many failure points in these, in this process and actually all these new processes that if we don't keep up with that, the, the advantage is in their court, whether it's now they're deemed complete or whether you didn't identify this issue and therefore it's, you know, it's in the, the project or, um, so there's so many, uh, places along the way where we're at risk.
Yes, this is true. This is a very, very good point.
Yeah. I see an extended period of long meetings, quite frankly, because we're going to be working through the checklist item by item to make sure that we don't miss anything on a staff level in review and on a commission level in review and at a council level on review. Because if you miss one item, you kiss that item goodbye.
Yeah. Yeah. That's a very good point.
Um, yeah, does it, sorry, does anyone have any additional questions or comments?
So, I was a little bit unclear on the timeline. So when, when does this, um, take into effect?
It's in, now.
Now.
It's already in.
Yeah.
Part of the new laws.
Okay.
Um, okay, yeah, I guess, uh, we'll just probably have additional, um, kind of conversations about the process and about the five meetings and, and how this is going to work.
Yeah.
And, and the, there is a way, I think you could ask an applicant to, um, you know, uh, have another meeting, but you can't demand it. Um, and that was under the permits time, permit streamlining act before. You could, and you, and under the old permit streamlining act, you couldn't deny a project because, you know, um, because they were, um, uh, they were out of time on their, on, like, for, uh, a review of a map, a tentative map or a project that had a time period to seek review. So you can't, we can't require it, we can't make it part of our checklist or anything, but, you know, I, I don't know, and I have, I don't know if other agencies have tried that, but if we did do something, like they would agree to another public hearing or something like that, I would definitely want it, um, you know, in writing or something from the applicant, so, um.
Yeah. Uh, I think, I think from our end, I think that, uh, you know, joint study sessions or, or some type of strategy, I think we can definitely get to five though. Um, it might just take some, uh, testing out some stuff at the beginning.
Yeah.
All right, so I think that's, that's good. Um, was there anything else, Guido, or is that all?
Uh, no, but John's also on the call, I don't know if he wanted to chime in on what's coming up or any other.
Okay. Yeah, so, so I guess commissioner reports and comments.
Who watched the city council meeting?
Unfortunately, I did not. I don't know if, if it was me though.
Well, maybe John can give us a thumbnail?
Was that the one just the other night or? Yeah.
Yes, it was. Um, not a lot related to planning. They did adopt a, a small business assistance program in Anthony. Anthony Carnesecca, our, um, economic development manager is in the process of, uh, he's actually developed the application and we'll be bringing that back to the city council at their meeting on, uh, next Tuesday, the 26th. I think it's towards the end of the agenda and really that's the only, only item directly related to the planning commission that's on the, um, the city council meeting for that evening.
Okay. Um, so I guess potential future agenda items?
Sure, so we've got, um, some meetings coming up in, in June. Uh, the first meeting or your next meeting is on June the 4th and you've continued the discussion on the ADU regulations to that meeting. We also have a study session for a project, I believe it's a four-unit subdivision on Lyle Avenue. And I apologize because I don't have the address, maybe Guido can chime in with the.
It's, uh, 140 Lyle, five-unit subdivision.
140 Lyle, there you go. Thank you, Guido. The city council next meets after their meeting on the, the 26th next week on June the 9th and there's a request from the museum to allow a museum, or not a museum, but a windmill application to move forward for administrative review and that would be a, a windmill, new windmill to be installed near the tankhouse building at the, the historic Smith House site. There's also a grant, a request for grant authorization to, and Guido mentioned this grant a little while ago, to get us additional funds to move forward with the completion of the objective standards. Then we have the June 23rd city council meeting and that meeting right now is slated to have the reach codes considered and recall, this is a set of laws that would require, um, all electric appliances in new single-family homes and new multifamily homes and also commercial projects. So that'll be the, the environmental commission is finalizing the, the law or the ordinance to implement that and the council will pick that up on the 23rd. And then you'll want to mark, um, on your calendars, a special meeting of the city council for June the 30th. Uh, that will be a check-in with the consultants that have been selected to prepare the objective standards and that is Lisa Wise Consulting and Opticos. And this is going to be a check-in with the city council to share with them the information that they've received during some stakeholder interviews and a review of our existing codes, policies and, um, documents related to land use. Also be on the, um, on the alert for a invitation for all the planning commissioners to meet with the consultants as, as stakeholders in the development process here in Los Altos. They would like an opportunity to talk to you about, um, some of the, the issues facing the city and some of the development rules and standards and regulations and would like your, your impact, input and feedback. And so that, they're expecting to schedule those, those meetings, the second week of June. Um, and if you're available and can participate in that, um, those one-on-one meetings with the consultants, that would be really appreciated by both, both us here at the staff level and the, the consultants. So, um, that wraps it up for the meeting horizon. You got a busy June ahead of us and, um, we'll go from there.
Sounds great. All right, I think if anyone, uh, has any other comments, if not, then, uh, it is 9:29 and meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Yay, thanks, Murs.
Bye, everyone.
Thank you all, good job.
Bye, everybody.
Bye-bye.